We have a place at the desk. It is now time for the regular meeting of the Howard Township Board of Education. I have a roll call on the board. Mr. Girm.
Here.
Dr. Lo. Mrs. Mall.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano. Ms. Mink, is this taking you? Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. O'Grady. Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Bonjivani.
Present.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
The quorum is present. Shall we rise and salute the flag and remain standing for the addition of our national instrument, Audre Lannister, the student, and some remarks filed are present. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a belief in justice, rule,
Well done, Audre Lannister. And if you would please stand by our Vice President, Mr. Mark Bonjivani. I would like to present you with a certificate. Thank you.
We have at least four cameras going in addition to this one. Great job. Great job. Thank you so much. Maybe? You agree?
The whole family is too.
Yeah. Come on. Get the families. Come on. And the first one about that.
Yes. Please remain standing. Out of my normal order of business, I felt it was important for us tonight to recognize that recently our community suffered several great losses. This board stands united in our sympathy and our deep sadness and our thoughts and prayers for lots of families of two of our own. We recently lost young Jay Konek and also a recent graduate of our district, Manisha Rivera, both who lost to cancer. I want to express on behalf of the board our deepest sympathies and condolences to their families. They are in our thoughts and prayers. In addition, separate from this district, but still something we recognize the victims of the recent Kentucky school shooting. The horror that took place that day is only matched by the courage and the resilience of the families, and we send our best and prayers to them as well. And I believe that concludes my remarks at this time. I'd like to turn it back over, but before we do, I would ask everyone to join us in a moment of silence for our two children and for the victims in Kentucky. Thank you, Lord. Mr. Sanisak. Next, Lord, please.
Thank you, and I'm President of the National Department of Secretary. I'm here to address this meeting as described by chapter 231, Article 1975, the District of the Secretary of January 17, 2018. It is now time for recognition. We will begin our recognition, which Superintendent of the Board has the board president's remarks regarding those recognitions. Superintendent is full and for president, which I thought was a very good one.
Mr. Isola, your pleasure. Would we like to stand recognitions prior to remarks? Or should I? Would you put it?
Sure.
I'll open up with board president's remarks.
Correct. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. My board president's remarks to be brief, but I would like first to start by recognizing and thanking everyone for participation in our board retreat. We found it to be an excellent exercise. We were very, very happy to have the input of our two newest board members as well in attendance. And while not everyone could be there, we certainly got off to a great start for the year, and we continue to do the work that we started there. We'll have a discussion item tonight, for example. One of the things that came out in our discussion on board goals was development of our vision statement and mission statement, and I would like to have that added to the table for discussion tonight so that we can also have the input of the members that were not present originally. And my intent, and our intent, I believe, was to have that here and also to go back to the committees so that we can get the full input of our citizen members as well and bring it back to the committee structure. Tonight, each board member will be given a template with a source of ideas which can start the discussion, but certainly doesn't end it there. So if you take a look at what will be handed out to you, there is a brief summary of the board goals that were discussed at the retreat coupled with some sample language as a starting point for discussion on both the vision and the mission statement revisions. Then in addition to that, we are also, I would like to recognize that we're going to be talking about committees. One of the things that came up at the retreat was a need to have a further discussion on the committee structure. That committee, that discussion should include both the meeting schedules as well as the importance of attendance by board members as well as citizen members because that's where the work gets done here at this board. So we will have a discussion as well for that, so those two discussion items should be added on. Finally, you know, we also had a very good meeting the other night with the township manager and the operations manager, and it was attended by myself, Mr. Isola, Mr. Sanisak, and Ms. Mangano as our newly appointed planning board and zoning board liaison. We thank them for taking the time to sit down with us. It was very productive and a great start to that relationship. So we look forward to good things to come from that. In addition, we have the pleasure, bittersweet, of course, we always have to say goodbye, of recognizing some of our longstanding terrific employees as they are now retiring. So Mr. Isola will give us some more details on that as we go forward, but we will be recognizing several retirees tonight. And last but not least, we have a very distinct pleasure of recognizing one of our schools which was recently recognized as a model PLC, professional learning committee, something that we take a great deal of pride in. As always, you know, the hashtag #HowLeads. Well, our wonderful school, Ardina, is being recognized tonight because, as always, they too help us to lead, so we want to thank them and congratulate them. With that, I would like to turn it over to you, Mr. Isola, for your superintendent's report.
Sure. And what we'd like to do this evening is take an opportunity to recognize some members of our family that have moved on to a smiling face and a lot more time for themselves. And we want to recognize a number of our retirees that were able to be with us tonight. And, you know, it's truly a bittersweet thing for the Howard Township School District to recognize in great joy with our members of our family that have made the decision to retire, but it's also reminds us of some big shoes to fill and, you know, everyone is a, no matter what the role is, everyone is an integral part of the success of this school district. And this evening, we have a number of individuals to recognize. I'll ask Mr. O'Brien that you have some of your colleagues on the board to come help. Mr. Sanisak will lead us off tonight with his recognitions. And if any of our building principals, if the retiree is someone from your building or your path, please feel free to join us in the recognition of these fine individuals that have made an impact for many years.
I would like to ask our operations chair, Mrs. Mallie, to join you.
Thanks. Dr. Quinn, you coming up too? Well, I'll start then, and I was going to start with a different one, but since you got up. We talked about it all the time at the beginning of the year. I think Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Isola always recognize how great the buildings look. We always say, and it's a pleasure when we get to see one of them here, but it's not necessarily a pleasure when they're leaving us. So it is sometimes the unseen, sometimes they work at night and we don't see them, but the buildings are shiny in the morning. One, a couple of the stalwarts are here tonight, but we'll start with Maria Bowen. Maria spent her last 20 years making sure Dr. Quinn looks good, and if you know Dr. Quinn, that's difficult. No, I'm sorry, sir. Making care, making sure, making sure that when the babies come in in the morning, the building's clean and healthy, and Maria has been a stalwart backbone of that, out working most of the, anyway. So thank you for all your service, for worrying about the kids, for worrying about the schools, and for everything you did to make us a success. Our mission is not complete if we're not all together, so best of everything. Tonight, tonight we will, Mr. O'Brien has the brick that we're keeping. We're not giving you that. That will be put into the patio at one of the schools and in cooperation with the HDEA, the HDEF, and the board, we also give a small version of that. It's a small paperweight that looks just like the brick, if you want to open it up and show everybody. So on all your papers at home, you can hold them on your desk, and that will be forever immortalized in the memory garden here at Middle School North. And if we get one at Newbury, we'll move it for you. Thank you to the HDEA.
Give me the picture.
Here. Picture picture here. I'll just, I'll just go out and, well, continue to go out and order. You'll notice a common last name here. I'm going to jump to the end. Starting the same time and leaving the same time, having a little bit more of a varied assignment, working at more of the buildings, working at Gribling, Greenville, I guess I like the G buildings, a little bit in maintenance, Land of Pines, Adelphia, Ricky Vaughn, come on up. Again, everything I said, ditto, except I'm not going to give him a kiss. Ricky, thank you. Thank you. There you go. Similarly, I think some of the unsung heroes, we don't see what they do, but the buildings are ready, the buildings are safe, the buildings are clean, so enjoy, same to Maria, enjoy your retirement, enjoy, and God bless. Thank you. It's not often I get to do three in a row, but also we make sure the buildings are clean, but we also fill the babies' bellies up, and we make sure that they have a nutritious meal. Ms. Mallie and the operation committee's help, we keep trying. But tonight, one of our longtime, I believe, 16 years, Marilyn Twulsey has been making sure the babies get their food and get their nutrition and have what they need to learn. Mr. Farley joining us, anything you want? Marilyn, come on up.
Listen, I was 180 pounds when I got this later.
Come on in here. Thank you. Another round of applause. Mr. Isola, you next.
Where is Kathy? There you are. So I'm so glad that Kathy came tonight because I went to visit her. I went to visit her at school on her last week, and she had a sick day, so I didn't get to hug her, and I didn't get, I did speak to her colleagues and talk about my wonderful, wonderful seven years working with this amazing woman, Kathy Valli, at Middle School North. I mean, as crazy as middle schools can get, she was always a calming influence. She always cared for children. She always took care of the neediest populations. Whatever, whatever it took, the Valli girl was there. And I know that Paul, Mr. Farley, echoes that feeling as the last seven years. So we were 14 years here at Middle School North, the last 14 years with Kathy, and she preceded both of us, but certainly I know in speaking with him, he feels the same good fortune that the entire staff that worked with Kathy felt. I mean, she's just somebody who did the right thing time after time for children. And I know that Mrs. Carroll speaks highly of her. She's going to make her way up here overseeing the people services department, and there's just not much to say. When you needed a smile, you talked to Kathy. And if her partners were driving me crazy, she'd make it okay. It was all good. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Farley briefly.
Again, you know, the same thing Mr. Isola said, but also such a hard worker, always one of the first ones here, got the best spot in the parking lot, right? I've been taking the spot now, just got, I never took it before, though, right? I always left it. Okay? But always here early, always staying late, a true professional, always in it for the right reasons, and that's for the children. You made a difference in so many children's lives, and I feel, I really feel fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with you. So thanks for everything.
And if I might add just quickly, Kath, you're a powerhouse. I was trying to think of how I could describe you, and you truly are a powerhouse. There is nothing you wouldn't do. You're full of energy. You have more energy than most people have. You never said no. You always just kept going on behalf of kids, and I will also say that your colleagues always loved working with you. There was nobody that wouldn't want to be your partner in the classroom, and that says a lot, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us. Yes.
And thanks for coming a second time to take this.
As many times as it takes. You know, if you don't want to, I'll give you an absolute blow.
Thank you.
So when I tell you four wonderful examples of why Howard Township is the extraordinary and special place that it is, each and every one of them, regardless of their roles, always looked at for children, they partnered with their colleagues, and they're shining examples of, again, why this is a special school district and a special community. So thank you to our retirees this evening. One more round of applause. So you often hear Mr. Isola speaking about the outstanding staff and the wonderful community, children that we're so blessed to have in our charge, but there's also another branch of this district that is critically important, and that's our school board. And January is school board appreciation month across our state, and at the first meeting of this month, we mentioned our, expressed our gratitude for this fine board as they were finding their way as a newly seated board, as Mr. Thor and Ms. Olvisen joined this fabulous board. But when I tell you, and this, you know, for those that know me, they know it is what I said, for, I am perhaps the most spoiled superintendent in the state of New Jersey, to have the opportunity to work with this board that remains focused on the outcomes that are right for children, the support for staff, and certainly the partnership with its leadership. So, you know, throughout this state, I visit with colleagues and I speak to them, and I can tell you that this community is so much better off for the service of these nine individuals and for the boards that preceded them because they have, they have a laser focus on the importance of taking care of children. So on behalf of the entire senior administration in this entire school district, Mr. President, and all the members of the Board of Education, congratulations on the fine work you do each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Isola. On behalf of the board, I express our appreciation for those kind of remarks, and I can tell you it's a pleasure to work in partnership with your team and with our staff, and we consider ourselves very fortunate that we happen to be the board that works with this school district, the best school district in the state of New Jersey. So again, thank you. Let's hear it for them, okay? It's good to have you. With that being said, sir.
And because of the, that's why I gave you, and because of the continued support, you are, as a board, you're willing us to embrace a mentality that rewards risk-taking by our professionals, by our leaders, and by our students, we as a school district are able to step out of our comfort zone and do things a little differently from time to time. And we like to talk about family forward and taking risks and giving license to do that, and we thank you for that support. And because of that support, tonight we'll recognize Dina's school for some fine work that I'm going to ask Mr. Preston to preface and introduce. And the reason why I want to turn this to my fine colleague is when I was appointed superintendent four years ago, one of the things that we looked for when Mrs. Carroll and Mr. Sanisak and I began our search for replacing me, which I knew would be easy, we wanted somebody who could focus on the importance of professional development and building structures that work. And Mr. Preston has really been a leader in advancing our PLC work, our school pound work, and all the things that relate to that, to bring connectivity, and he's been everything that I hope for and more in that area. He's still learning in others, but in that area, he's been, he's been exceptional. And I know this, this accomplishment of Dina is certainly something special to Dr. Pennell and staff, but I know firsthand how proud Mr. Preston is because of his partnership with all of the schools in this work. So congratulations to you, Mr. Preston. A little surprise for you on that, but if you would be so kind to introduce Dr. Pennell and introduce this special recognition.
And then you turn the mic off. Thank you, Mr. Isola. I am proud of this work, and I'm honored to be able to share this accomplishment, and it's an accomplishment in a moment of time, and I can say that with great confidence because I know that the structures that are in place will allow this work to continue to advance and move forward. We are honoring, again, a significant milestone, I think, in the work that is happening around the district, but that our Dina school has taken on, you know, we often talk about compliance things that we have to do, but that we do them in a way that goes beyond compliance, that we find true meaning and value in that work so that it makes a difference for children. We heard the wonderful stories of the people that are here doing wonderful things with their time and their talent, but to be able to give that time and talent of these individuals an opportunity to make a difference, the structures of support, these great things don't just happen. It happens through very strategic endeavors, through very deliberate and deliberative communities of practice who come together on a regular basis. Would you provide us the opportunities to do that as a board on this night of recognizing boards as well? And when they can come together and when they're structured to the, and an organized opportunity for them to come together and bring their talents together on behalf of children, amazing things will happen, undoubtedly amazing things will happen, and this is a recognition of those phenomenal efforts. I'm going to speak not long, but longer than I would, not because I presume that I could do this better than Dr. Pennell could, but because Dr. Pennell is losing her voice, and so I'm going to try to save her, her voice for the time when it matters most, which is with students. But if I fail to mention anything that you think is of value, please make sure that we mention it. This work was done on behalf of, the application process was intense. The organization that is honoring our Dina school's efforts is Solution Tree. Solution Tree is an internationally recognized organization for their professional, their emphasis on professional learning, in particular for professional learning communities and communities of practice. This award is a national recognition from this international organization. There are only, I think roughly, 200 recognized schools across the nation, and we are, our Dina is the only New Jersey school that is recognized as a model PLC school through Solution Tree. So it is a significant acknowledgment of the fantastic work that has been taking place for many years, and I appreciate the accolades and confirmation of my contribution to this work, but it was taking place before I got here, there's no doubt about that. I certainly didn't admit that. That work has been in place and advancing, and again, when we can create the opportunities to get the professionals together under meaningful deliberative practice, strategic practice, great things will happen. People will take advantage of that in their all the right ways and the best ways for students and run with it, and that's what we have a fine example of here. We'll be honoring, and we have certificates for the people who were directly involved in the development of the application, again, an intensive process. We're going to watch a video in a moment which will give you, I think, a rare glimpse in what happens behind the scenes to get to that moment of teaching that happens in the classroom. All that other body of work that exists in planning and strategy, organization, grappling with data, statistics, and getting those numbers to paint the picture that is of the whole child and of all children. You're going to get to see some of that in a moment. I can tell you this is not scripted. It is not canned. It was genuine, but I'll point out, please listen for the consistency because that's a hallmark of the true culture of Learn. With that, Dr. Pennell.
I just want to say thank you so much for the time you're taking. But it's really all about the irreliability of students at home to our, all of our students, their, all of our kids, or perhaps in your home room or in that grade or in that class, they've lost all of us. And so this is, I underline, how we all work collaboratively to address everything that's been assumed and often ignored, so thank you so much for the time you're all on, and to share our work.
Who will draw your attention to the video, which will allow you to see again the amazing work and example of amazing work that's taking place on behalf of our students across the district every day.
Welcome to our Dina school.
Welcome to our dean of school.
Our dean of school is located in Montana, New Jersey and is part of the Howlet Township Public Schools. We attribute our high level of student and staff achievement to work down the higher level of professional learning community. We are excited to share how this process has impacted children and staff in our school.
In New Jersey, every school is required to form a school improvement panel. The role of the school improvement panel is to ensure that policies and procedures at the district level for evaluation, professional development, and mentoring are being enacted properly at the school and so it's appropriate for each school. Here at our dean, we have moved beyond compliance. Here at our dean, we have evolved our school improvement panel into our school professional learning community. And to that, we've really extended the number of stakeholders that sit on this panel. So, for example, we include a special education teacher, a special learning teacher, two of our academic support interventionists, different representation of each of our staff groups. Then with the school professional learning community, we decided that we're going to include more classroom teachers to get on input. We're really working on building shared knowledge in our building. So, instead of just having one classroom teacher sit for the entire year on our school professional learning community, we were able. So, each month, each time that we meet, a different classroom teacher joins us. The work for our school professional learning community is cyclical and ongoing and it is truly a continuous improvement process. For the 2017, 2018 school year, our goals were to lead to student intervention plans, student-led conferences, and how do we give students in creatively complex tasks. So, our work within these areas is ongoing throughout the entire school year. These goals were developed when we asked ourselves as a professional learning community, what could we want our students to learn? How do we respond when our students struggle? How do we provide opportunities for our students to extend their learning?
Our professional learning community needs to cover an analyzed data from previous year to identify trends that we see with our students. We then pinpoint strengths and weaknesses using a variety of common cognitive assessments between school and district. Our current reality this year saw many strengths in the lower reading lecture with our small group interventions. Our professional learning committee has assigned developing a plan to share with collaborative teams to discuss them and come together to work with students to meet their individual needs. Our professional learning committee has highlighted the focus that we share with the collaborative teams to form to graduate instruction. This allows us to reach all of our students throughout the year.
During the responsive intervention process, collaborative teams need to assess specific students' needs. The team looks at several districts, statewide, and common cognitive assessments to identify a measurable and attainable goal and create a student intervention plan. The interventions that are created are targeted to students' specific needs. We are able to provide a system of interventions that guarantees each student will receive additional time and support for learning as needed by the students. During response to intervention, adaptive tactics may occur and the collaborative teams will regroup and the student intervention plans are frequently revised.
As a teacher, it's really important to assess the needs of all students. I've had multiple students who were struggling with standard averages for multiplication. I worked with these students in small groups, but still, they didn't understand. I went through identity to spoke to two of the members. We came up with other strategies and created a student intervention plan to help reach the need of this child. I'm currently second down and working in small groups with the students to ensure both success. I will continue to do this and meet again with the data team to get feedback about how these strategies are working.
We meet as a collaborative team in this building, the level of professionalism and instructional understanding is truly unparalleled. We leave our meeting armed with the new knowledge ready to apply to our teachers.
Since our district has got this full G, we're able to plan, discuss, and share our ideas at any time. We're able to share lesson plans, documents, activities, web sites, videos, and more with a very simple platform and can discuss issues as they arise without having a formal meeting. This is an invaluable tool that allows our continuous collaboration far beyond the dismal meeting.
In math, we're doing a body of health star and we were, we think that we did a little more and like we had a list from last time with the nest, they could use work on. And after we were like the topic that we learned that day, concept, we got to pick something to do and learn about.
Oh, was that many of the school notes, PLC? So, we're going to present Dr. Penelope some certificates for the group, so if you would ask some of your colleagues from the board to join us, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, some of the, again, the individuals that were directly responsible for putting everything together to get this accolade moving. So, Kathleen Magnoli, the vice principal of the building, Dr. Penelope, principal of the building, Pat Pickering, one of our wonderful ESL teachers, Catherine DeFranza, also one of our ESL teachers, Renee LaFaut, one of our instructional coaches, Natalie Nigro, instructional coach, title one coach, Terry Cooney, instructional coach, Tina York, technology teacher, Lynn Suppin is, Lynn is, is special ed, I was going to go with ASI though, special ed, Lauren Adams, and Tanyo Garrett, both instruct, academic support instruction teachers. You saw many of them.
On behalf of the board, I know we're all here tonight and we actually need to take this back to our, sincere congratulations and very, very sincere appreciation for the wonderful pressure.
She's sick, you're all getting sick. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Penelope.
Feel light tomorrow.
Hi, Randy, you got two. That's right. One of our board members living also liked to wait for you.
I just want to say as, and we have three our dean of parents sitting on the board and I think we're all very proud. As a father of a current fifth grade student, just happened to be in that video, so I can look through my eyes, but, and a former our dean student, just thank you for the leadership. You know, I've seen the result in both my children and their friends and I really appreciate the leadership, Dr. Isola, Penelope, and also your leadership team, making our dean a really great school, so thank you.
And I echo.
Yes, she was a star and a very good student, was a heck of a girl.
Absolutely, we recognize that.
I guess you're a mom.
Right. And, you know, to piggyback on that, I remember Dr. Penelope, when my baby started off in kindergarten, you were there and you and your staff guided her through those wonderful years and prepared her and now she's in the care of Mr. Farley and his team here at Middle School North. But I can tell you that the experience that we enjoyed at our dean was exceptional and we appreciate everything that every staff member did for our family. That's just speaking as a parent and a board member, thank you.
So, thank you, sir. Congratulations once again to not only Dr. Penelope, but the entire Adona community. With that being said, I thought tonight would be a real appropriate night since it's Board of Recognition Month to launch our Student Board of Education Day program. Mr. Bonjavani has been appointed to kind of spearhead as of last year and as vice president will be continuing as running point for this program. So, we're really excited. Mr. Hobbie was kind enough to be here tonight to kind of give you the update on some of the modifications we had talked about from our initial launch last year. So, Mr. Hobbie, please.
We're excited to announce that this year we will be organizing Howlet Township Public Schools' Second Annual Board of Education Day. This day will recognize the hard work, the dedication of members of the Board of Education and allow students to experience the important role each member plays in the education of our students. On April 18th, selected fifth grade students will serve as members of the Board of Education, attend committee meetings, and learn about the responsibilities members of the board assume in the operation of our schools. In preparation for this event, the selected students will be invited to attend the March 21st Board of Education meeting and experience a regularly scheduled board meeting. A total of 15 students, three from each three to five school, will be selected based on the content of their response to a write-in prompt. This year's prompt will be, "If you were to serve as a member of the Howlet Township Board of Education, what policies would you implement and support in order to promote a positive learning environment for all students?" Teachers will distribute and collect any completed essays during the month of February. Selected students will be notified by March 12th. In order to assist in the support of this event, we have invited members of the board to come out to each three to five school and briefly meet with the fifth grade students to help promote Howlet Township Public Schools' annual Student Board of Education Day. So, we're excited to go into year two with this. We've done a survey this year with the students who participated last year and we're excited to, you know, launch this event again. So, we hope we are able to participate and I believe Ms. George provided a schedule for those who aren't able to sign up.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hobbie. Your leadership is truly appreciated and we know you go above and beyond, not only in this event, but on each and every day. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Isola.
One of the, one of the real pleasures of that, of that experience last year was the day that the students spent at the board office. The outgoing commissioner of education, Kim Harrington, has appraised it, she's used that a number of times. Sometimes you just have to get out of the way and let the students learn. And for those of us who sat in the meetings with them and heard these fifth graders come up with ideas about how they would share material, how they would like their voice to be heard more, as impressive as it was, the actual board meeting, I have to be honest with you, that was really the fun day was just to hear, to hear the wonderful voices that those of you in the school have educated those children, that they could sit there and be the adults that day and really, really play a meaningful part in terms of direction. There are a number of things that we've talked about at retreats in the past that really have come out of that program. So, thank you for leading this effort, thank you for, thank the whole board for allowing it to happen. And again, thank you for the staff that's here, including up there. Thank you for the work that you do with the kids that make them the people they are when they come into those sessions.
Thank you, sir. And of course, I think it's the second year or so, each time we've done this now, this being the second, we thank Ms. Mallie for her...
Absolutely. If you weren't going to do it, so I...
So, I wanted to take the opportunity to...
That was a great discussion.
...her contributing recommendation or suggestion that we were able to put into practice.
Well said, Mr. Isola.
I do have an important update, more to come on this, Mr. Preston will hand this down, there's a copy there of a letter that Mr. Sampson, the superintendent of the Creole Regional High School District, sent home to his community. And the important part of that is they are, like most high school districts, grappling with, you know, supporting students to avoid drug and making poor judgments. They are on April 25th at Colsonak High School going to be providing an opportunity for the community to come out and hear a presentation, a parent workshop on the dangers of vaping. And vaping is the next crisis that is facing our youngsters throughout, not only Howlet, Monmouth County and the entire state, and I'm sure it's a national trend that we're seeing. And I know that schools are grappling with this issue and certainly here in Howlet Township K8, we're not absent of it, you know. When we speak to students, they are experiencing that, you know, outside the walls of the school and that's concerning because it won't be long until we're dealing with it within our walls if we don't, you know, take a proactive stance. So, we're going to be drafting a letter to our community, inviting them out for this opportunity to hear this presentation because we truly feel that education is the greatest, you know, barrier that you can put up and when parents are speaking with children about good decisions, whether it be, you know, any young adult issue that they come up with in this circumstance, vaping and perhaps potential drug use, it's the right conversation for parents to be having. So, we were, Mr. Sampson was gracious enough to extend the invitation to us. It's right down the block here, Colsonak High School on Five Points there. So, hopefully, we'll be pushing this out to our middle school community because we want to make sure there's awareness of this and that parents are equipped to ask the right questions and make the right observations. So, I wanted to share that. Also, before we wrap up here, I do have to make an amendment. At the first meeting of, first meeting of each month, I report to the Board of Education our district suspensions and unfortunately, I apologize, there was a collateral error in the report. I am sending the revised report and Mr. Sanisak will make the appropriate adjustment for the official record, but it was actually 15 suspensions. So, please accept this revised report in lieu of the previous report already made at the first meeting. And with that, sir, that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
Mr. Sanisak?
We, the board is in need of an executive session this evening. The items for this evening are a personnel report, an update on the outstanding legal issues as we always do in January, and the kid report, if we have a motion to go into executive session.
Motion moved by Mr. Miller. Okay, all right.
That was motion printed in the agenda. The board is in executive session. The board administration makes their way back to the dice. It is now time for approval of the minutes.
Can I get a moment? No, but... I'll take it by Mr. Miller by a split second.
Now, we get to move this around the house.
Yes.
Mrs. Mallie.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. May Manner.
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthers.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Next, sir. Nine votes in favor, not a vote. Correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. Your comments, sir. Will you go to announce the committees?
Yes, I believe you'll have in front of you, if we distribute after everyone, the committees...
The citizens in the board.
Right, can we hear from the record? That's fine. All right, so, please announce after consultation with board chairs. With our board chairs, please announce the following appointments. To community interaction, Todd Pucher, Andrew Lewis, and Deborah Tarby. To education, Todd Rotell, Ken Nieser, and Angel Sanchez. To finance, Matthew Clark, James Reddy, and Jeff Smith. Operations, Matthew Clark, Matthew Giachetti, Pania Kohler. To policy, Matthew Malagieri, Angel Sanchez, and Deborah Tarby. I believe that concludes all our citizen appointments, sir. And thank all of board, the committee chairs for their input and facilitation in this process. Now we can hit the ground running with full citizen input, look forward to the work of being done, maybe even further on that matter.
Next thing on the agenda is the focus topic. And now, the board, the superintendent has already concluded his report before Zach, so worth the focus topic, the board retreat update.
First, I want to repeat earlier remarks, I want to thank everyone that was able to participate and attend. I want to thank our Agenda Retreat Committee, which has now evolved into a professional learning committee led by Dr. Lowe and assisted by Ms. Mallie and Mr. Bonjavani. We had a very, very productive meeting which led to a great plan and then, of course, a rubber meets the road. We had our participation by both experienced board members and our new board members, all were excellent in terms of their input. We were very productive. So, I believe we have some items for discussion related to that, sir. I think is this the appropriate time to put them on the table for you?
So, so, the retreat was really a productive day. I really appreciate having the opportunity to collaborate with an interactive process like we were able to create through Dr. Lowe and the committee's leadership. At the meeting, one of the things we needed to make sure we did was to make sure that the couple of board members that were not in attendance to other commitments... the couple of board members that were not in attendance through other commitments, was that we were able to provide dialogue and then an update about the day, and one of the things, one of the objectives of the work was to make a recommendation to the whole board in terms of embracing board goals for the new year, as well as Mr. Brian Straj, along with the, the folks at our retreat, to try to capture some of the things that were discussed there, and, and kind of put them into a, a vision, mission statement as we proceed for a draft dialogue purpose, where then that will be also, if in fact the board wants to move in that direction, they then can send that out to the various committees, make sure citizen engagement is there, make sure that it is seen before any formal action be taken on such. So, sir, everyone has this treat in front of them now?
Absolutely. And to, to add to that, I think it's really important, since we are a committee-driven board, and we've given out a high degree of citizen input, you know, the board will drive the process, and we, we, this is our mission statement, our vision statement, but as we gather input from our committees, we can refine it, develop it, and then as a community as a whole, at some future meeting, we are going to adopt a vision statement that's, we feel is a good synthesis of what we all agree upon. But certainly, you know, our goal, I believe, should be to try to accomplish this within the next several months, and, and I think it's something that we can do. Any thoughts or input from the board on that? Yes?
Yes, I think we can. I guess for me, the missing piece is the action plan. Our retreats, a lot of time, we should be here, and so an action plan is developed in administration, and I know at least three board members who are there, probably seen that, so I definitely feel we can do that, but in conjunction with reviewing that action plan, we'd ask for that to go back to committee-
Agreed.
...location did, and then, you know, definitely the board members need to see that action plan as part of that review, because that's the top priority.
Did we get a copy of the action plans?
Yes.
Alright, so that's something, thank you, Dr. Lowe, that's where, anywhere you have it, point on that. No, I think it's important, because that's a critical component, and we'll definitely inform some of the dialogue. So, we would ask that a copy of that action plan is made available to the board members if they-
Yeah, we are projecting it right now, but we will, we will set down-
And you're expecting to read that?
No.
I appreciate the head to copy.
Just so the, just so the, the audience can-
Oh, I'm just kidding, just for self, sorry.
So, under a direction, we will share with the entire Board of Education, and we will also indicate to the committee that it is grappling with the rest of that in their process. So, for example, the student achievement obviously is gonna live in education, community, outreach community, actually will live with CI, so we'll, we'll designate so that each of the chairs and the seated board members that sit on those committees are aware of what their charge will be, and then at the upcoming meeting, at the chair's discretion, that should be shared out with, with the act of committee, and then be a focus or discussion topic at their meetings.
And I, and I apologize, I wouldn't do justice to the process that took place to lead to this, your, your conversation should spark somebody else, that we broke up into focus groups, and we're covering different things using a topic of the lens, right? And some excellent pre-work was provided to the board involving that, and so each group broke out and looked at it through a different lens, boardsmanship, governance, and et cetera, and so some of those recommendations came out of that work. It was a great start, and really, I think it was a well, well-appreciated process. So, that's the foundation of the beginning, and then we'll complete the work using the same process as we go along. Anything further from the board, yes?
First off, I really, I'm really very, very sorry that I couldn't have been there. I thought it was important that Mr. Miller and I were where we were, but-
Absolutely.
-it sounded like it just had a great day, but I do have a comment about one of the things on here, and if you want, I can bring it back to committee first, or just quickly address the here, if it was ever- On vision statement, and I was looking at it a couple of times today, and the, the one piece I think I would change is empowering learners to understand and embrace problems. The big, the biggest, who's to say what's the biggest for an individual person, whether it be staff, or whether it be students, or administration? I think, I would just say, give, give everybody the, the opportunity to come up with the boldest solutions for problems, so I would personally remove the word "the biggest."
And to go along with that, anyone else wanna add to that, to the-
I do.
Yeah. I mean, I think vision statement is obviously gonna inform the mission statement, as we go through the work and look at the different bits, you know, hopefully, I think Mr. Bonjani's comments are, are, are good, and as we add, it doesn't have to be a single line, we can, we can actually aspire to add in and make it impactful, you know, I think the term's resilience, and also the ability to think independently, creatively, critically, you know. However, as we look through, we look at some of those things that we think are critical components of our long-term, big-picture success of education, what is it that we look to achieve? What's the vision separate from our mission statement? So, that's the hard part, sometimes we look at it too, and you say, what's the, you have to really think about that, and yes.
You know, I know we're not gonna go through all this now, but again, just working on those terms, learners.
Right.
One of the points that's been made is that the learning takes place at different levels, obviously, we want to success more students, and that's where the focus is, but we've talked about the learning process going uncertainly among staff and among board members. Part of it is to make it clear to someone who isn't familiar with our, what we're trying to do, who are referred to when we use the word learners, and also words like problem, I would rather use challenges, but again, it's something that can be worked on.
Yes.
I'm just trying to catch what this was done, are we developing a new strategic plan, or is that what this goal is, that we can do anything, or?
I'd ask Dr. Lowe to address that, maybe.
You know, I think, Mr. Arzola and I had that conversation, the missing piece for me is that you start with your strategic plan, meaning the review, and then your vision and vision come after that. So, exactly, your strategic plan is the body of the work, so one of the things we've done, that activity that we set on, you said we go through the focus rooms, you know, at some point that was very, that helped us to kind of flesh out what we developed out of it. So, it took us like some time, and you know, we choose to do what we choose to do.
I'm just gonna do it all.
That doesn't sound like it, I do need to just hear all of it. Starting the strategic plan, are we getting it?
No.
No, because the mission and vision should be, I think we should get our strategic plan complete, and then start developing this mission and vision from that work.
Did you, I guess, I guess it's-
I think if we're starting with the mission and vision, I think we're working backwards, and that's why we're not on the seat of retreat, when, did you start on a strategic plan, and were you, are we doing it internally, is that, when you started here, I don't know that.
Yeah, that is, it's a great point, yeah.
From the, looking at the action plan that was up there, in each area, we wanted to keep, to the first meeting, you know, start our meetings, to look at that section. It's really an update, you know, we knew that, okay, this is what it says in the plan, these are the outcomes, accomplishments, it's really laid out in a nice format. So, we need to start with that, first committee meetings in your respective areas, to look at that, and then, you know, I think we come back together all, we, I don't know, from this floor, so if you haven't had any of that lens paradigm, then you can do that, read the article, you can go, you weren't there, but then we come back and we talk about that, and that's kind of how we fleshed out some of the ideas we had. So, to your point, I do agree with that, but I think we need to finish that, because we was such a rich discussion, we couldn't do that, we also have to re-critical people that were not there, Ms. May Manner, Mr. Lowe, and then if we do that open session, or-
Yeah, I agree.
Then we can talk about now, how do we do this?
I, I'd like to entertain the thoughts from the board, but before I can get what I had, because it's a good discussion. You know, one of the things that's going on right now is, your point's well-taken, you know, when we talk about strategic plan, but at the end of the same, it's almost like a virtuous cycle, when you think about where does it end, where does it begin? You know, the analogy is, you know, the circle, because, yes, absolutely, we need to go back and do the work, and look at where we are in terms of our current strategic plan, the outcomes, and everything else, to inform some of what it is that we've done, not just through intent, but through practice, and what's developed, because our intentions were always focused in the area of student achievement, and over the years, our strategic plan has addressed a lot of the challenges that we've placed in the past, and our response to see if we can get ahead of those, to meet our students' needs, but then over time, we began to, through collaboration, through thoughtful dialogue, come up with things like the stained glass window, RTI was discovered to be of more emphasis in terms of policy and thought, and so we've evolved, right? So, our strategic plan has sort of helped us to move in a certain direction in our intention, but now we've gotten to a point where maybe it might be helpful to take a look at what is our strategic plan currently saying to us? What is it telling us is our, our true vision, you know, not so much to rewrite it or to create a new one, but to lean from it and to what we feel is our common shared vision, and then that'll serve as a framework for saying, okay, that's where we are, we, we, and now, where are we gonna go with the next phase? Does that make sense? I mean, we're, we're taking a look back, reassessing not only where we were in terms of our vision, but where we've evolved through action and through collaboration, so that we can have a fresher perspective on that, and that then sets a framework for the next part of the circle, which is go into the next strategic plan. So, I think that's the work that I will talk about. Does anyone disagree, or do you feel that that kind of captures it?
I think that, I think that a strategic plan, at least in the past for a, a number of places, has fallen somewhere in between the vision and the mission statement. The vision statement is typically, it's not the, how are we gonna do it, it's not the, it, it's really, in an ideal world, here's what we, here's what we would like to see, that's the vision, ideal world, here's what we'd like to see. Then you have the strategic plan, which involves not just the board, but the community as a whole, other times we've had over sixty people, and out of the work that's done at that, out of that strategic plan committee, is where you come up with more of the mission statement in terms of, here's how we're going to do it. It's not quite the action plan, which is even more, the action plan helps to develop the mission statement, but, but a vision at least, presenting a vision before you even go into strategic plan, ideal world, here's where we'd like to be, and then use all those other tools to get there.
Yes. Mr. President, if I may just, try, because Bruce and I were grappling when we were trying to directly capture some of the notes that we were taking, that we had taken on a darn retreat, and we had some dialogue back and forth, and there was a little greatness for us, too. So, we weren't totally sure if the charge was, and I think we kind of landed that, because, right, the vision and the mission certainly comes from the work of the strategic plan, as Mr. Miller and Dr. Lowe pointed out, but we almost thought that you were trying to, what you tasked us to do is capture the goals that the board wanted to set on for their vision as a committee, as a group, as well as its mission and vision, right?
Absolutely.
So, and you can see the goals, we don't, we wanted to make sure we looked at these recommended goals, or the goals that came out of that. So, I thought that this was going to be a launch, that the board would use these statements as their governing push, but yet, when we go through our strategic update in about eighteen months or so, then the district, it's all like district goals and board goals, right? So, I thought this was going to live there, or at least I'm suggesting that perhaps this goal captures the work of the, this entity, not the entire, you know, school district. So, just the idea, the conversation, sir.
No, I, I agree, I think the board goals that were on the top are something that was initial, a charge of the knowledge of competition, that, that's fine. What's interesting about it is, you know, again, listening to the dialogue around me, which by the way is very thoughtful, I enjoy it, it was, it, it lends the, the fact that what we're talking about here, and this is, you know, kind of a, the concept's almost a little, more, it's a little vague, as you said, you know, where we're going with this, we already have a vision, we've had a vision because we've, we've been living it, we do it every day. When we sit here on the board and operate the way that we do, our vision as a board is to be empowers of our administrative staff and team and people, and we, we help them, we, we don't get in their way, we, we get out of the way of progress and instead support creativity, ingenuity, innovation, and the, you know, the concepts that are embodied in the phrases like fail forward, and our more favorite one is how it leaves, right? So, we are, our vision is present in the things that we do every day. I guess maybe if we were to stop and think about how can we articulate that? Because it's not that we're coming up with a new vision statement, we're simply, you know, articulating what we're already doing, and, and the mission statement then we're driven from that as well. So, I think if we put it in the proper perspective, it's not like we're challenging the board to come up with a brand-new vision statement, but rather to determine the things that we are already doing so well that allow us to be successful. Does that make sense?
So, this vision and vision statement is more not district, this is more for the board, and then the district will come up with a different one, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is something, we've never done a vision and mission statement on a board level, so this is something-
Perhaps we might have, I mean, there might have been a board that might have.
We've never-
Is it our-
We've never-
Do we, do we want it, is it worth the effort? I mean, the question is, alright, so we've run it this far, is it worth the effort to do that?
To Joe, to Mr. Arzola's point, because that's not what I thought, we can handle district goals, we can handle board goals, I don't think this doesn't affect that, because there are things in there, boardsmanship, governance, there's some buzz, key words in there, so, and like I said, perhaps maybe the charge was, you know, the charge, I say wasn't understood, but if this is a reflection of district and board goals, I'm not seeing it.
So, the, the current, or the, the current district board goals? I'm sorry.
No, the district, the district goals that, that appear on our agenda, I believe those were created as, those were-
Those are owned by Ms. Arzola, the district goals are owned by Ms. Arzola.
And not owned by the party.
Well, yeah, the board goals are separate from the district ones, but in this, but
in this particular case, we're, we're still talking, do we wanna make it a district vision and mission statement? Because after all, the work is combined between the board and the administration. We don't wanna, we don't wanna operate separately in the vacuum from administration of something important.
Right, that's why I'm thinking, that, that's why my first comment, where I was saying that we were getting ahead of ourselves, we started with the vision and the mission statement down, before we get into the work of the strategic plan.
I, I understand.
But when you, when Mr. Arzola brings it, and Mr. President, that this board is the vision and mission statement of the board, come off the board goals, that's not, that, I mean, we can definitely start something new that works, I mean, if it didn't suit the board goals that, that are presented towards the scene, I understand it.
That was just a suggestion, Mr. Miller, I apologize, I didn't want to speak for the president or any other board member. When we were grappling with that over the last couple of days, we toggled back and forth, and probably should have asked the president for clarity, so please accept my apology when, when we created confusion. However, the idea was to capture the energy and the feelings and the work that took place within the retreat, and, and, and memorialize it here on, on, in a statement. It's to the board's pleasure what we do with it, whether it's springboard, whether it's adopted, whether, you know, please.
Way to clarity, in our breakout session, we were given some work, and in those were characteristics, eight characteristics of highly effective boards, and that was the template and framework for frankly, for our discussion. So, one of the things that we did during that discussion was, we were looking at the, at the, and we realized there were certain key phrases within each of those characteristics that we thought made a lot of sense for applying to us, because they seemed to capture who we were as a board. So, we thought, wow, it's almost as though if we just looked at this and parsed out all the words, I don't know, when you do Google, you have that, that thing that comes up all with your searches and words, a cloud, so to speak, we could create our own cloud, so to speak, right, I'm speaking your language, right, Mr. President? You know, which we have, which we can capture all the different phrases from each of the eight characteristics of highly effective boards, and if we were to frame those, rather than this, you know, here, in that, that might be more adequate in describing what we as a board feel is our vision, because, you know, and that would separate us from the strategic plan part, it would just give us something as a board to reflect on to see if we all agree on, as a shared vision and a shared mission statement, that could help us inform our work. Does that make sense?
Should we, then, if that's the case, just to position, should we then call this board district vision statement and mission statement?
Yeah.
Except for that, basically, or my mind.
Yeah, so, we will, we're gonna clarify, and we have consensus, this is the board's vision statement and the board's mission statement? And we can start with the vision statements first and work on the mission statements going on.
And we can still catch this through committee process, right?
Right.
Yeah, through the committee process, yeah.
Which I think is going-
Which I think is going to be important, because in a brief statement, we've a lot there to unpack. So just to understand some context, if we were going back and forth with the charge, up in my office, feel free to come in, is all the, the license plates that we started out with, the goals and the language and questions asked around those goals that were created from those different lens groups, those focus groups. And also, yeah, the, the action plan, and then also the charts that we created two retreats ago with our student board of ed, from the language, and again, visual language that were in. So, taking all of that, Joe and I kind of sat and went with the briefest statements possible that had the most power and impact, to connect all of that work together. Clearly, that's not going to hit the mark, and that wasn't being intent, but I think in now taking it back to committee, we could unpack that work together in smaller groups, kind of dive, dive in and find our own understanding and connection, and then reframing of some of that language. I did change it up on the screen though, so that it reflects what we had just, what was just shared, that maybe this is the board of education vision statement, the board of education mission statement, also connected to the draft of the 2018 board goals.
We, we, could we have consensus, like, all right, so we'll continue to work, refer back to committee?
So two pieces, two pieces, the action plan, I think, if you see, if you see the areas that the strategic plan was bringing for us.
We can just walk through it really quick, Dr. Lo. If you look up at the screen, and again, we'll send this out digitally to all of us. You can see the seven goal areas and the goal, and the strategies that were done with the strategic plan committee in 2014, and then on the far right, some of the accomplishments towards those goals were laid out. We're obviously not going to read this, but just so you see format, and you know what you're going to be looking at when you receive that email, hopefully tomorrow.
Great, and, you know, we definitely want to go deeper, there are some nice things to talk about, because we really haven't had time for the day you go there, but that definitely, we can frame out some time through committees, and then also as committee of the whole meeting and board, I think, for future days, to take that up.
Does it cycle down to a specific committee or every?
Well, I think we're a committee, well, other committees, but, you know, each committee has a different lens, I guess, as well, okay? An operational lens, a finance lens, an education curriculum lens, you know, so, so as we go through it, they're going to look at it with a slightly different perspective, but if we can synergize and bring their work together, we get away from the silos and start thinking about the mission in a more holistic sense. It's going to help us as we go forward, because the impact that we have from the hard work that takes place in front of us, and now we're newly appointed liaisons, you know, they're going to be informing our discussions as we go forward. And as Mr. Miller points out, yeah, we need to start thinking about the strategic plan coming up in eighteen months, and that would be.
I'd just like to say, Dr. Kell would be proud of your suggestions, yes.
One of my favorite habits. Yeah, one of my favorite habits, you know, I have to admit, okay. So, so now.
In addition, as we continue the update, through Dr. Lo, obviously here as the chair, we also did a review of that, and I think that would be one to, provide that update for the, for the entire board.
Yeah, I'm saying, those, I think those are key pieces, that friendly discussions that we had, got us to the point where we've met the district goals and board goals.
And, you know, as we get closer and closer to the data, and we actually be watching the strategic plan, having a clear understanding about all the outcomes and where we can build from there, is one of the nice things about it is that, once you're already at a high level of achievement and accomplishment, you just, you know, you're standing on a higher base to move even further. We, we want to look at both where we can succeed and where we have not, because failing forward, part of the advantage of failing forward is learning from that experience and seeing where that's also posed. So while we don't always like to do that, sometimes it's good and helpful to assess outcomes, both on the impact we've learned from the success as well as the failure. And, you know, I know our administration does that regularly, to assess and to learn. So anything further on this, these items from the board? Should we close the discussion and then refer back to committee? So then what we like to do is continue to have administration take the point in terms of wordsmithing and building out what we hear here, we see here, but then have, you know, this sent back to each individual committee to look at to their own lens, and then bring back what they, and each, I would like each committee chair to report back out their work at a future meeting, and then have a discussion around that to see how we can, again, as literally synergize from that. So we'll, we'll, we'll send this back to committee and ask that we can do this in the appropriate number of steps, whatever we feel comfortable taking over the next several board meetings. That being said, close this discussion, moving on. What else do we have, Mr. Sensen?
The next item on the agenda is the committee and liaison update.
Oh, actually, we have another discussion.
I was just going to say, our further discussion item later on in the agenda is the committee structure, so maybe we can just do all that together then.
Would it be a pleasure to the board to move the, since we're in discussion mode? Okay, good. One of the topics that came up was, over the course of the last year, one of the practices that I follow is to sit down with each individual board member regularly on an opportunity to communicate with them, and of course, in that conversation, we talked a lot about the work that we did. And something that came up as a recurring theme from multiple board members was concern about how our committee process, while sound, could be improved. I think one of the things that common observations were concern over having full attendance at the committee meetings. Reason being that there may have been issues around logistics, timing of the meetings, other things. There was also a sense that oftentimes, meetings were not fully attended by either citizen members or board members. And since the work is so critical, and this is what we do, and that's how we drive our policy, it's important to step back and take a look at that and have a discussion about the committee structure, the timing. I think we need to have clarity on the meeting regularity, so that there's an opportunity for each participant to plan, and to, then to, again, talk about the level of commitment that we need from our board members and citizen members, to make sure that wherever possible, that they are there, because each voice is critical, each voice is important. We, you know, one of the topics that we talked about is having the opportunity for divergent thinking. You want to avoid groupthink. And what happens is people who tend to like each other and get along and actually tend to agree a lot, even as well-intentioned they are, can sometimes fall into a trap of staying within a relatively commonly accepted framework, and that's what we like to call groupthinking in corporate world, right? So we want to avoid that. And so having divergent thinking is not a bad thing, as long as it's done in the right fashion. It's actually a welcome addition. So the absence of members at committee meetings takes away from the work, and it's going to be important for this board, as a board, to commit to making sure that when we do schedule our meetings, that we have input from all the members. The chairs need to set times, and, and then each chair will be responsible for holding their members accountable for attendance. Not that we don't understand, every one of us is going to have situations where we can't attend, and that's fine, but to, you know, expect a certain level of commitment. But going forward, as we continue to work, we're going to have greater input from, and greater number of voices, which will only add to what we referred to earlier as the ability to synergize. So I'm going to stop there with my remarks and open it up to the table. Any last comments or feedback? Yes?
I just want to say, somebody who came up through the citizen representative process of course in here, just, we have to consider that those people are, they want to be there, otherwise they would themselves have to. We have to consider that they have, they have jobs, they have lives, they have children.
Absolutely.
And we have to plan around that. I, I still think seven, give or take, every committee's a little, right, the second meeting is one I would consider, because if you were, I mean, I'll use my own circumstance, and I think there's a lot of people in this area who do compete, a lot of large committees, that's called a lot down here. You know, I love to be at these meetings at seven, I don't five fifteen, and barely get there. So six o'clock meeting would be a little bit out, out of question.
All right.
A lot of committee meetings, I've wanted to attend, with policy and community interaction as a citizen, physically possible. And I know that others that are in the same boat, and I just want to invite as much education as possible, so just be cognizant that people do have others, mom, they have children.
Absolutely.
Sometimes get along with them, keep the kids coming out, so.
I agree.
Do what they can to help.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping they keep to normal. So, but I agree, but before, you know, I, I just want to say one thing and open up. Our, our administrative team has, of course, without, they're going to say it themselves, but I'll say, I know that the administrative liaisons are committed to supporting the committee work whatever time we need to do it.
Anytime, anyplace, we'll do that.
I remember you said that. So, but it's true, and I, I think, and I understand your point of view, and I respect the chair, because all of us, you know, feel the same concern, and I think it's a healthy discussion that needs to be done at committee level when they go past.
It's interesting, there was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, this was.
This became a, this became a topic last night, community interaction, and there happened to be four board members there, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Okerson to join in on this part of the conversation, because going into it, and I think I've mentioned it in board meetings before, but the concept that Mr. Arizola and I had talked about was maybe trying to join that up to PTO meetings before their meetings, which sounded like a great idea, until you actually threw it out to the president's council, only finding, which I did not realize, that a number of the PTOs have meetings at different times. Some have it at six, some have it at six thirty, some have it at seven, but then the following discussion after Mr. Arizola and I left, you and I were having a conversation beforehand, and if I read the conversation correctly, it's that the PTOs also are not getting the attendance that they've had in the past or in the past.
Right, and, and that's, I just brought, I said, they said the exact same thing after you guys left, was just that they have the same six people that come and do all the committees, and they're not, and they said if you had it before in our meetings, you'd see the same six people that chair all of our committees, and then, you know, you'd have the president there. So I think it's, and I'm, I'm on the PTA board of two schools, and the money's down from both schools in all the events, and the attendance is down, and it wasn't like that last year, so we're just assuming it's economy and people are strapped, and, you know, it's not like one school's doing great while the other school isn't. They're, we're both getting hit in, in all areas by a lack of attendance and, and lack of money. So it, it's not that they don't want to come to you, it's that they, they just don't have time, and they're spread thin, and.
And I think the follow-up piece to that also is that, and I don't think this is a, a big seat to anybody, I think people tend to come out when they think there's a problem. So certainly finance will always draw people, because money is always something that's right on the hot topic. Mr. Sensen, I can go back far enough, I'm not sure anybody else sitting here, wait, this is calendar, to, many years ago, when there was a scare in the Ramtown area about the water, we had a meeting that time where not only was it standing room only, I mean, people couldn't fit in a room. So if there's concern about something, people will come out, but maybe the lack of attendance sometimes speaks to the fact that there's nothing pressing that I feel I need to be at. It's interesting, because community interaction is certainly one that's a little bit different than the other committees in terms of the work being done. That tends to be not so much work being done, but conversation. And I think that between the comments that were made last night, comments that Mr. Thor has often made, even before being on the board, and that we've had conversations about, I think we are going to have to just kind of play with that schedule, maybe go a little bit later, maybe alternate months to schools. We're just going to have to play with the schedule for that particular committee.
Do you like the idea of alternating between the schools?
Well, we've always alternated between the schools. That's, that's something we've done every meet, every, we've done that for years, and we've done that before the president's council.
Can I make a suggestion?
No, I was just going to say also, I was sitting next to one of the moms at, and she's not as outspoken as I am, so she was saying, as you guys were saying, that if you're not getting people, that if you really want parents, you get the teachers to promote to the kids, you know, sometimes that will, just, just the fact that this teacher said it, now, now I have to do it, and, and it'll, it'll, they want you to meet it, if there's a reason, like you said, it happens.
But one last piece, it's interesting, because I, I brought up that, again, and I'm going back many years, but I remember that one time when we really, really felt it was majorly important to reach as many parents as we could, was when we were talking about the construction of what ended up being three schools, and at that time, it got to the point where we actually were having a, a meeting in the cafeteria at the same time as there was a movie or something going on in the gym, just to provide, for lack of a better word, a babysitter, so that more people could attend. Thankfully, we're not stressed with that kind of situation anymore, where people have that burning desire to be there and find out what's going on. But I, I don't know, look, I'm spinning here too, because you and I have struggled with this for forever.
I believe, Mr. Miller, next, and, and, Mr. Miller? Oh, Mr. Arizola, I'm sorry, do you mind?
I agree with Mr. Thor about starting the meetings, at least at seven, of course, the people getting home, and then keeping their children and stuff like that. My thinking now is with this, setting up the meetings on certain dates, I think putting that on our website, where those meetings will work to, on that calendar, because I noticed recently that there's a parent that shares all the activities that are on that shared calendar on Facebook. Every week she puts out a summary of everything that's happening in the schools, from the board meetings, to the PTA meetings, and all the events, and, you know, to get that information out. So I like the idea of a Saturday meeting, but if we can get that up on the website, so she can share that, or anyone can share that.
I'll take that.
And I'll say, we, we.
Create events, create events on Facebook, because if you create an event, every single one of us can share that event, I believe, and.
And also pops up.
It pops up, and you can, you know, interested, going, not going, so automatically, all of a sudden, we get a head count. Oh, we're going to have, we have fifty people that said they want to come to this meeting. You know, you love to see that, right?
You're going to stick up to that.
Right, but, but the point is, that also helps us with our facility, is we could say, oh, we better use the gymnasium instead of the, you know, because I've been in a couple of committee meetings in my time, where, yeah, we were here, and the, the committee was sitting right here, and there were two hundred people sitting, you know, it might have been over a memorial, but here, but I just remember. So we've had some meetings that, yeah.
Okay, so many years.
Yeah, absolutely.
And with that, if we can include one or two, that's not the default, I think that might work, but if we can include one or two of the major things, um, so, not that much, I think, you know, that's how we're going to keep more attention.
Well, Mr. Arizola, do you have anything?
I think, Ms. Allison.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Okay. Get, getting back to the original issue is, is the importance of citizen members and board members to attend.
Yes.
I understand that community interactions committee has a different dynamic, because you do want the public there as well. But the importance for the, the work that's done in the other committees, it's really for the citizen members to be able to attend and the board members, so that there's the same voices. And I have said it in the past as well, at seven o'clock is when we have our committee of the whole meetings, and so I think the other committees should also be meeting at seven o'clock, just so that it's a consistency. I think consistency and communicating is very important. I think that we have a schedule of all of our board meetings for the entire year, and our reorganization, and I know that, and I, I know that finance and operations have been working on a committee, a set meeting time every month, or, and, you know, you set the meetings, and then if you don't need one, you cancel it, and that's, that's a lot easier than trying to add one later, but I think if we have the meetings, and it's published, and it's put on the calendar, and it's out there, that this is the schedule of when all the meetings are. And then the communication is really important now, because there is a chairperson, and I think if a citizen member or a board member cannot attend, they should notify their chairperson that they cannot be there, so that, you know, that, it's not that the chairperson is sitting there, which has happened to me on occasion, and I am the only one out of the set shows up, so.
I, I want to stop for a second, just, take it, sympathize a little bit with what I've heard. One, obviously, specific committees like community interaction have a different dynamic, but the committees that are composed of three board members and three citizen members, if we structure them out, we publish a schedule after, now that we've got the citizen appointments, if we lose each committee chair, it's a big problem. if we lose each committee chair, we probably reach out to their citizen members and poll them and agree, if seven o'clock is the default date that we're gonna use, then they have to, you know, we have that discussion if that needs to be changed. It has to be done in a way that maximizes the potential for everyone to attend. But at the end of the day, if it's five, say seven is good, and one says, you know, seven thirty or eight, you know, we have to go with, you know, it's the chair's discretion, you know, at that point. So, we'll leave that to the chair, because each committee operates in a microcosm of the entire board, if that works. So, one of the duties of the board president is to be responsible for running the meetings, working with board members, and one of them is also making sure, ensuring attendance. You know, so I would ask these two chairs, then, based on this discussion, that we, we have a practice, which we have done in the past, which we can, you know, you know, further continue, is that each committee chair will be responsible for monitoring attendance, working with their committees to establish equitable meeting times that promote the greatest community participation going forward, and will expect as a standard, uh, part that any board member or citizen member, not even attend a meeting, give the chair adequate notice, and also correspond...
And of course, we will assist all the chairs in that, absolutely.
So, there's two people on that chain, communication in case our board chair or administrative liaison misses it, one person will be there. Does that make sense? So, we can adopt that as a practice? Would that be helpful? Good, yes?
Thank you, sir. Divergent thinking, let me just, yeah, so let me just state the obvious, that we are skirting around respectfully. This meeting happens at seven o'clock. Take a look at the seats. PTAs are telling us people aren't coming. Mr. Thor makes the great point that he's working, his wife's working, they're both doing their part, they're parents, they have multiple children. I can remember when we had two children, Pamela and I, it was easy, we ran man to man. When, when, when the baby came, it was now zone. We needed a third person to help us. Uh, I can tell you that I didn't miss many of my children's events, but it was sometimes someone else shuttling them to the event, so I could finish one and get to the other. The, the reality is, Dr. Quinn, one of our fine principals, stood in the audience tonight as he had a retiree, and he left abruptly, and he felt poorly about that, and he sent me a text to say, "Mr. Isola, I apologize, I left abruptly, my son had basketball." We are, we are, that's not the point. The point is, our communities, suburban American communities, are so stretched thin for time, they, our meetings are gonna continue to look the way they look, because our community is that busy. And God bless them all, I love it, I'm a dad, I, I know it. But we must continue, and I remain committed, don't misunderstand that, to get our interaction with this community at a high level. We are, we should not be beating ourselves up, saying this is unique. This is a crisis across school districts, across suburban America, not just here in Howard or this state. However, divergent thinking, while Mr. Thor points out, him and his wife are working, so this would be contrary to his, his belief. Maybe once in a while, we try a meeting during school hours, because if one of the parents is home, their children are taken care of in school, and we may get a turnout that is a different group of community. Not all the time, seven o'clock is the appropriate time, I, I totally agree one hundred percent. If we're going to do an evening meeting, we have to allow for our community to get home from where they've been. But, but that has not worked. So, maybe we need to be thinking differently in every third meeting or something, and we schedule it in advance. It's not a secret, you know, we put it out there, as to the point of avocados and those, Mr. Miller will gladly get any support you need, and the things we need to get it on the website in advance, we can use the Twitter account, the Facebook account, that, we're all in. And I'm not trying to be contradictory, but I'm trying to address the real issue, address the real issue. You guys are so committed, with nine individuals sitting here, and who ran from where today to get here on time? And it's awesome that you have that level of commitment, but you put your name on the pitch and ran for a seat because you had a commitment? Moms and dads, or guardians that are taking care of children, it, it's just, it's not, we need, we need...
Three hours.
We need thirty hours in a day, twenty-four is not getting done anymore. Um, so I think that's the reality. So, we have to think different, like the open mic segments, and pushing information to the community, and monitoring how many people are looking at that information that we're providing. So, we have to continue to think innovatively, uh, to capture our audience, our, our folks that we need support from to continue the greatness of this school district. But, um, the time is important, and I totally respect that. But we also need to be looking through a different lens, right? We need one of public's lenses to look a little different. Just my thoughts, and I, I would have felt like I wasn't serving you well, but I didn't state that, so...
Can I make a suggestion that, at least for the purpose of the community interaction, that the board accept an opportunity to experiment with what the superintendent suggests, to have every third meeting be held?
And it may be a flop, but...
Well, the point is, we're not gonna know unless you try.
It's not a bad idea, I mean, Ardena, up until last year, the year before, had their PTA meetings during the day at nine thirty. And, and the answer was the same thing, the kids were at school, most of them stayed home. They only moved it to nighttime in the last two years, when more of us working parents had got on the board. But, like you said, you must be doing something right if they're not out of your power. So, you know, it is what it is, but try it during the day and see if you get more.
I'd be fine trying with that committee, again, you may not have all of us there, depending on what it is, and that's...
Certainly not at a regular standing time, but just as an alternate, maybe every third or fourth meeting. And let's see what happens, because we're sitting in empty rooms, right, so we have nothing to lose.
If we can set the board to, with the specific intention of the community interaction, to give them the opportunity to create a alternate schedule periodically, every third or fourth meeting, and see, and then we can evaluate how the attendance goes from that perspective, because, you know, the whole point is, if you can interact, if it gets better success, if we do it that way, then we can, that can inform our decisions going forward. Good?
Sure, okay.
That being noted, then what we'll do is, hopefully, our board secretary is able to make a note. Um, we're going to develop a practice, uh, which entails the things already mentioned, but also, Dr. Williams, something?
I just wanted a clarification, I think it's still each committee and the citizen members determine the time of the meeting.
Right.
But I just hear that at seven o'clock, and that, you know, I'm looking at to see, once you get a place, what will it best?
Well, the important thing is what will best for that committee.
Exactly, that's all. I heard you say all in at seven o'clock.
Well, that would be the default, barring process where you poll your committee and work with them to determine. If your committee feels that six is fine... I mean, we're looking right now at education, we have three citizen members and three board members. When they sit and talk about, and they're gonna need to do this, they're gonna need to, uh, and it'll be up to the chair. I think the chair, this is gonna be responsible to the chair, to reach out to each, or remember, have the administrative liaison, if they're not able to, reach out to each member of the committee, and poll them on, you know, the timeframe, saying, seven is the default, but is that present a problem? And if so, what's the alternate time that works for you? And then, you know, develop the, a meeting time that makes sense for your committee. You know, so obviously, starting with the chair. You know, a chair has, you know, starts a bit, so...
One further thing, if it's okay with the chair, this is where I overextend, and I apologize. I'll leave you duplicate meetings in a month, I'll do one in April and one in E. I'll, I'll try everything that's necessary. I'm just thinking that we gotta do something different to get them interacting and, and attending. Whatever you folks decide, though, we will develop a master schedule and have that posted in a nice, neat, organized way, so that it's, it's very visible to the community.
And, you know, we, we spent, I mean, we spent a lot of time on community interaction, too, there's importance in the fact that we struggle to get more connection. Remember, community interaction doesn't require simply attendance and meeting. Community interaction takes on so many forms, and we've been developing and growing our community interaction through both digital media, our RSD, communication on our website, and now with Facebook. So, I think as we go forward, you know, I look forward to the results. Yeah, everything else, so we can continue to look at different opportunities to interact, which takes on many, many forms. And I think the fact that we, I think we have, looking objectively, I look at, I think our community interaction in the, in the whole is better than, than most, because we're, we're really pushing and trying to find ways to communicate.
I was just gonna say that if we ever wanted to share with any of the other committees, or even maybe with the time of a board event meeting, the time to do that will be during the summer also, because you have a lot more flexibility, people can write their schedules. So, if you ever, down the road, want to consider this again, try and do something else.
Yes.
Now would be the time of year to see how it works.
Okay, good. So, on the, and on the committees that maybe we're not looking for more flexibility, but for more consistency, we'll have the practices put in place, alas each chairperson, to, you know, and their administrative liaison to work collectively together to get that timeframe, so we can create a published calendar going forward, which will be set and, and delivered hopefully by the next time we meet as a board. Can I turn that up? Can, can we get that done? Great. Any further comments from the board on this topic? Yes?
Um, the only thing I think, I think I've said this to the, now, in third meeting, to do it, and you wanna work all over, you have more opportunities for community involvement, so you should not beat yourself, trust me. God, there's precincts, everything you have is great, I, I'm hearing the struggle that you want more, but you're providing more opportunities, and so many different forms for people to be involved.
Just...
And that's not the norm, what I see in the variety displays, not just every district, just across the board. So, you know, it's a struggle, but you also should be very grateful, because nobody's ever said, and that this board and this community is not being provided an opportunity to be a part of the discussion, be a part of the table, to the table.
We are one of, Mr. Miller, are we one of the three districts in the entire state that has citizen members even on our committee?
One of two.
One of two, of the entire state of New Jersey, I mean, one of two.
And was it Red Hen, but, and whoever it was, actually got the idea from, from us. Well, it's not all, but it's, it's not all, but they were from, who heard about it in one of the orientations. Heard about it at one of the school orientation's and picked up on the idea.
Who did we get the idea from?
Where does it?
We leave, we're not leaving.
Who got it from Ron?
Well, listen, yeah, perfection is never attainable, but the pursuit of perfection results in excellence. So, we will continue to seek, we will continue to seek that, and we'll never get to perfection, but we're sure gonna do it then, to, darn, pardon me, strike that from the record. Darn good job. I was, you know, going for, uh... No, yeah, that's good. I didn't hear anything, right? It was my mic. Okay, there we go. Uh, all right, that was good, I appreciate the discussion. Um, again, as we go forward, each of our chairs leads on their committee, and I appreciate their leadership and their commitment, and each board member leads as well, and I appreciate their commitment, and as a team, we're gonna go on and take from what we've already been doing, great work, and build from there even further in 2018. So, this was a good discussion, and I would ask that we codify this in a practice, you know, and I don't think we need to go any further than that, but I think it's helpful to set the framework, okay? All right, we're good. Any further discussion items, Mr. Sanzak? I believe that concludes discussion for tonight. Um, okay, so now it is time for...
Committee and liaison reports.
Very good, well, I am actually gonna look to my right, because I know that you do have something to report. Our newest, newly anointed liaison to planning and zoning, so, Ms. Vangano.
Well, I'm the township manager and the deputy manager as well, from Sir Isola and Sir Ryan's, et cetera. Um, so starting with relationships and role, and hoping that, you know, this will help us kind of, during the meeting, understand that, you know, the township and the school should grow together. And, you know, when we get there and get the information, and bring it back here, we'll, you know, show that. Kind of puzzle of a conflict for me, I think, as far as my committees, because I'm the operations committee and the community interaction. So, this is gonna take up a lot of my time, and I didn't have one last night. So, if we set up a time, you know, definitely a time for those committees, that will help me definitely, because I'm gonna be stretched everywhere. Um, definitely interested in seeing how this work goes, a lot of learn, but I think the partnership is really good start. Um, you know, it is a lot of heated topics on there, you know, and there's a little bit of inauthenticity there, but, you know, I think that is important for the parents to know that our district holds all of our town, you know, to see the route, and go police department, and go to Dallas, and see that connection, and that's just, it's gonna be excellent.
Thank you for sharing and picking out a lot of responsibility. And your administrative ways on the, Mr. Sanzak, are continuing to create a team of employees?
I have four questions. Is, who from the town was there representing the township?
Um, so township manager and current U.S. Deputy Chair.
Are you referring to our counterparts?
Yeah.
No, they were not at the meeting. We, you know, I think at some future date, it might be helpful to us to go sit down. I know that I did speak with the deputy mayor, and let him know that we were forming a position, and I know that he was otherwise engaged and couldn't attend, but I'm sure he'll be very supportive, as will the rest of the council and mayor. But at the end of the day, the clear roles and responsibilities are, Ms. Vangano is the liaison, she's there to observe, to understand and to report back the issues that are relevant, that can impact in terms of our strategic planning and everything else. And working in concert with Mr. Sanzak, that'll help us as a board greater understand the developments that are going on in our district, especially since we're eighteen months out from our strategic plan. And we've been through the process of looking at demographers, working with that. We've seen that, we've did a lot of work in the past. More information, more understanding of the things that are pressing for our time, it's only gonna help perform more work. So, I, I, I think it would be great to have an opportunity to sit down and have them meet Ms. Vangano and people. If that possible, we can do it.
Really starts to be key, as well, you and I, and the deputy mayor, and Ryan's office, so she was very willing to work with us, and, you know, we are, as well.
Right. Sure, well, at the end of the day, the nice thing about it is that the mayor and I are counterparts in that role. My role as the township liaison is to speak directly with the mayor and vice versa. Uh, but, you know, you can't be here for it once, and one of the nice things about having a great team is that we're able to have folks step up like you're doing, to be there, just as when we have our delegates to, during the school boards, and the PTA, PTO, et cetera. So, um, going forward, I think it would be a good, good additional source of information for us. And then, if there are issues that you observe that, you know, think need, you know, more attention, obviously, that's from, we'll talk about at this end, and then where appropriate, I can reach out, channels with the boards, uh, et cetera, to talk and communicate about what it is that we want to do. I think that process, working, of course, very collaboratively with our superintendent, because at the end of the day, one of the things that I like to think about is that while the council is a policy-making body, and we're a policy-making body, the people that actually run the district, the people that actually run the town, are the folks that we trust and hire to do that job. So, one of the best things that we've found over the years is sometimes getting out of their way, the money to do the job, is the best way to have success.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Thor's question, and, uh, Ms. Vangano, please correct me if I'm wrong. I thought the town manager said he was gonna put you in an email loop with the chair, uh, planning the chair of zoning, the main agency.
Yeah, I have the alerts, so I don't...
Right, and they talked to us about the alerts. So, so, uh, while they weren't present, the town manager did clearly state that he would...
Right.
Introduce digitally through email, Ms. Vangano, and let them know that she would be an important member of the, you know, the service body.
And I'm, I'm confident that they'll be very supportive of that, and I think it would be great. Thank you, Ms. Vangano. Okay, look forward to your first report. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Miller.
Uh, Finance Committee has not yet, our meetings are going to be the Tuesday, or, the Thursday, before each one meeting, so our first meeting will be February fifteenth, uh, at seven P.M. in Lloyd Moppen. Um, this past weekend, I attended the New Jersey School Board's, uh, time of conversation meeting. We get here from one of the attorneys, attorneys that was there, for what he hears, possibly sweetie and currently, you know, working on funding the formula over a five-year period, putting in approximately a hundred billion dollars over the next five years. Uh, of course, that letter is written, so, um, the state, uh, can be, uh, there is that. And on their agenda, they have a cash charge note, which is, um, for districts that let, uh, staff go, and do settlements. Um, now districts, uh, districts that are taking the control and find out if they left on a good charge or anything, if there was any settlement, um, that they left, or sort of that, it's kind of, uh, more difficult. It's kind of, uh, more difficult. They're also going to look at prohibiting the salad cap for superintendents, and test course on testing, Department of Early Learning, research mandatory for K-5, and mandatory kindergarten for all districts. Um, on, they are saying that the Middlesex County Superintendent, that many parents are saying that, um, because of POC possibly not being mandatory, that there'll be an increase of parents opting the children out of the test. Um, so they're expecting a huge amount of parents opting out because of POC going away. Um, Montecito School Board meeting is coming up on February eighth at Southern, uh, Southern Edriture Community Center, uh, so hopefully we can get everyone to attend that. And as you probably heard, probably campus school boards, it is very exciting to announce that Advery Park Superintendent has been nominated, they are, uh, superintendent as the new commissioner, so active commissioner, Dr. Lafferty, where is it? Lafferty? As the new active commissioner, and his confirmation here, I believe, has not been set yet, so we are excited about that. And I think that Montecito School Board Association, we want to wish everyone for happiness, for our situation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You know what I would love, when we get, to get a chance to think about the community, to mention something interesting, the funding formula and how that impacts going to be in districts like ours. Um, obviously, it's not really in stone, and how they plan to pay that and, you know, but if we can actually see what that would do for us in terms of...
I apologize, thank you, sir. Um, just a point of clarification for me, Mr. Miller, the concept that Middlesex County is grappling with is, is a lot of conversation that they will remove POC as a requirement for high school graduation. Um, Governor ran on a platform that would look at removing POC completely and perhaps replacing it, but there's no, and I don't, I don't want to get a false narrative out there or misinterpretation. This spring, POC is still part of the required curriculum assessment that we are required to give, um, while we have faced a decreasing number of refusals over the years. Um, it currently this year is in place, we will be administering the POC in compliance with the requirements from the New Jersey Department of Education, and I'm not sure when the graduation change is slated to happen, unless you heard something this weekend, I'd love to hear more, or is it still rumored too?
Yeah, this target is still a rumor that, like I said, they just hear.
That was a response to the graduation requirement being removed that would increase refusals then?
Right, right, it's still a rumor that it's, yeah, POC's going to go somewhere.
Thank you, sir.
But it's still, we all know that it's still some type of testing.
You know, I wonder how, when NJASF came out, how the first couple of years went, and, you know, I know POC got off to a rough start and had a very, very negative, uh, phase to a lot of the public, but at the end of the day, as I just pointed out, we do need a global assessment. Uh, I know Dr. Will, you talked about the importance of having metrics that matter, right? And whatever they come up with, whether it's an enhancement, replacement, or abandonment of POC, there's going to need to be a standardized test that we can utilize at a state level. Um, so we'll see how it goes. In the meantime, POC is still the, uh, assessment test that we are compelled to administer.
We, in what discussion you had, now that the three, we already had three days, that we started to really get meaningful data from POC.
Yeah, we need a minimum of three years to be...
Right, and now that we're in that, we're really starting to get that meaningful data that, you know, that'll be useful for the students. Right now, unfortunately, we might have to move to a new system if the government does and the commission does bring us that way.
Careful what you wish for.
Hopefully, you know, they may, they, they'll make it and will, you know, they'll continue POC, you know, with everything about them.
Kind of ties in with that conversation, it's interesting, because just as common core, you know, was changing, what, one page and a couple of lines, and then they called it something else. With POC, part of the theory is that, uh, part of ESA, which is the federal law, requires states to do some type of assessment and report on it, and we're going to be down at the ACCE Institute in two weeks, and I'm sure this is going to be one of the topics that's going to come up there, but Governor Murphy did run on a platform that, part of his platform was that he was going to get rid of POC, so it'll be interesting to see what else happens with that. You spoke about the funding, and the interesting conversation that happened at Cal the other day at the county leadership meeting was that, you know, if you remember back years ago, that it was the gambling and, and the lotteries that were going to pay for education. Now, the talk is, well, if marijuana is approved, is marijuana funding going to be what's going to support education, which is kind of strange just to even think of that. Uh, the, it's the first Senate Education Committee meeting, which happens tomorrow. Senator Ruiz will be continuing in terms of her position, chairing that. The early childhood piece, uh, Mr. Miller mentioned it, but it's interesting because that seems to be a really hot topic for them, and they're actually thinking of creating a separate department within the Department of Education just on childhood. Uh, also talking about, it's not for us, because we already have it, but, but mandating full-day kindergarten across the state. So, there are definitely a lot of things on the, on the topic with that, so just adding to that. Um, community interaction, I don't really think I need to give an update, we've certainly talked enough about what happened at community interaction last night. Uh, Mr. Isola gave his report, we had conversation about the meetings, and that was the main part with that. Uh, just something from NSBA, from the National Association to mention, uh, just as we were talking earlier about the eight characteristics that CPE, Senator Public Education, had come out with, it's in a number of books. Uh, National hosted a meeting yesterday and released to a new book that was created by a coalition of national education leaders, uh, some six different elements that makes schools successful. That book and its report is called The Elements of Success: Ten Millions Speak on Schools at Work. That report is available on their website. Uh, there was also a video, if you go to the NSBA Facebook page, you can watch the conferences, about a forty-five-minute conference that was held, and releases the book, but you can also get parts of that, that book, and, uh, just like CPE did with the eight characteristics, they have some characteristics that I, I think are worth looking at, especially in terms of our own boardsmanship lens that we've been chatting about, so, uh, that's it.
Thanks, sir. Um, okay, looking forward to that. Dr. Will?
I, I was, yeah. I was going to say, I'm going to be sending, we haven't met, we're going to send, I'm going to give you a list of dates, trying to map them out in the year.
At the end of the day, as, as we recognize, it's going to be a question of each chair's prerogative discretion, based on working with their committee, you know, but, you know, I think absolutely, and, you know, again, never perfection, but we will, we'll see. So, you'll look for opportunities there, uh, and look forward to the board. Mr. Miller?
Operations have not met. Uh, our first meeting is scheduled for the Tuesday before the board meeting, which is February thirteenth, yes, February thirteenth, and, uh, September, at the board office. And I have been working with Mr. Sanz, and with that being the schedule, we will discuss it at our committee meetings, make sure that it is okay with the rest of the community. That's the, our, our slot meeting time that I rest the year.
Legislative advocacy, we've listened to Mr. Bonzavani and Mr. Miller, who have tremendous amount of knowledge and experience and involvement in this, and I look forward to sitting down with them, getting a sense of some of the issues. Uh, again, we talked today about, tonight about board goals and board direction. Obviously, we do adopt resolutions here, or that we want to reflect our position with school boards, and we're going to turn to them, and again, Mr. Miller, the county association, I know you've worked in that area to try to reflect goals and all that, but, uh, part of the value of the discussion tonight that I saw, for me or for our committee, is to see if there's anything in our prism, through what we experience here in Hallow, that we would like to be able to look at. Perhaps there's nothing, but that's something that we want to explore.
I, I concur, sir. I also look forward to the opportunity to think about, maybe you could either find legislation or even promote and draft legislation, because your background in OLS will help us in that regard. But my experience in the past, serving on another type of board in the healthcare space, was that we were able to work with our legislators to draft legislation specific to the healthcare industry. Surely, we as a, as a district, as we gain what is important, could look at things from a state level. If there's something that we see out there as an opportunity to improve, why not take our collective wisdom and experience and get them to start promoting legislation that's meaningful, that's impactful? Uh, I mean, one of the topics that came up at the retreat was, with Lexine Galloway here, he was talking about her experience in New York. In New York, for example, they allow boards to set aside fiscal reserves, which are not allowed here, instead, we have to spend it or lose it. You know, so, instead of being prudent, cost avoidance and ways to save money, if we were able to build a buffer so that we would have better stability in funding our educational programs during periods of time when state aid is not as wild, everybody remembers two thousand and nine, that was not a fun year to be in education, but if we had been able to have an additional billion or two billion in reserves, it's, uh, you know, business enterprise, because, and I won't say business, as a prudent institution looking to serve children, we could do that. So, I mean, that would be something that I'd like to throw back to the advocacy committees to look at, because, and maybe connect with people, think about what we could do if we could make a substantive change like that. We're not asking the state for a handout, we're asking somebody to stay to allow us to be prudent, because we're engaging in a five-year planning, strategic planning process. Our business office and our administrative team have done tremendous work in finding efficiency while at the same time being extremely thorough in working on that total package of delivery to the student. And if we are then hung up because of a failure by a large macro entity like the state to deliver funding to the programs that we have built for excellence for our kids, and why not simply ask for the ability to help us insulate from that type of shock? I mean, that, so I'm a little passionate about that, but, uh...
We can certainly look at that, and of course, something that fascinates all of us, because it's so crucial, is the funding in general. And to look at funding formula, and to look at, you know, specifics, to see what might be more advantageous. I mean, that's something that the budget committees in Trenton do all the time, and it's something where a slight changes can make a big difference. So, this is a great area to look at.
Thank you.
And just a report on policy committees, we are going to...
I know, you had a comment on that.
I said a question more, I think, this is more...
Is this unrelated to the...
Exactly.
Okay, so, you remind, Mr. German, we had to tell one question?
Yeah, this is more me, just being newer. Um, what's, where does this policy come from, that New Jersey is not allowed to have reserves where New York...
State law.
When, what was the concept, when, did we ever have it?
Well, when you ask me a question like that, be prepared. Uh, you know, well, okay, just because we're in polite company, I'm not going to answer that the way I would, but honestly, when you think about some of the legislative restrictions that they place on, on public education, it is astounding that we are as successful as we are. Um, and it is done most likely with the best of intentions, as most laws are, but Mr. Sanz had the squinting and saying, maybe not, but I, I think in this particular case, it's a question of folks who unintended consequences, they put a law in place, it's precedent, it then is built upon, and it's a self-perpetuating vicious cycle that comes on, and I happen to notice that for some reason, regulations never seem to decrease, they always seem to increase.
But I'm, I may look at it as, you, you or I, if we want to go on vacation, we save money, we go to our reserves. If we want to do something as a school district down the line, you want to have a big long-term goal, being having that ability to save money would be, it would change what we as a board and other boards across the state do.
Universally accepted practice among fiduciary institutions that require them to place reserves aside, for example, insurance companies, providing benefits, pensions have to follow a particular standard of funding, based on interest rates, expected rates of return, and they have to take steps to address those. Our state unfortunately has not seen fit to do that at the state level with the pension, but what, that's a whole other conversation. But if you have a fiduciary responsibility as a district to provide for a stable and educational environment for your children, it makes perfect sense to give you the ability to do so in a manner that's prudent, thoughtful, and respectful to the taxpayers, because instead of having to go back to them and raise the levy, we have reserves in place. We do that in an unlimited extent, we were able to save money and have...
But we have been successful in working around that.
Within the framework of what we're allowed. What we're talking about is being able to take that and expand it to allow us to protect a greater degree of volatility in our funding, and thereby protect the needs of our students and our staff.
Because if this could allow, I mean, that's something I would be in favor of in terms of pushing some kind of, overturn, I don't know if that's the right word.
Creating a greater degree of ability to create reserves.
Because us as a responsible board, this would absolutely change what we can do in the future, long-term, especially when developing makes the most of these...
Absolutely. Mr. Sanz?
I mean, you, you, I put the mic back because you said it all so well, but, you know, a lot of legislation is with good intention, but some of it is also reactionary to bad acts of one or two districts. If you look at a number of those rules, as, as someone was caught with their hand in the cookie jar, to use a cliche, you know, they, they overregulate to make sure no one else, you know, and they, they throw the baby out with the bathwater, I don't want to use too many cliches, and then that, that tidal of regulations start to be stifling to the point where, um, as we saw over the past probably seven years, we've been able to find ways to mend that three-to-five-year planning cycle, Mr. Miller on finance and those beforehand, without violating those rules, but you're right, if it were to be corporate America, we would actually be written down by auditors for not having adequate reserves. We would be, we would be called negligent for not having the reserves needed to survive different downturns and happenstances. So, you hit it right on the head, and it would be a good one. We have had that topic on for legislative advocacy in the past, as well as other funding issues, and we'll get into that, and one thing about legislative that Mr. German and I spoke about is since there aren't citizens, and it's more of a planning, or we may be meeting with legislators, that probably will not have that common, um, schedule that the rest of the committees did, but it's not acting in the same capacity, it's more of an outreach.
Right. I think, uh, going forward, imagine my concern when I first joined the board a decade ago as a financial planner and found out that you can't do this. I mean, I think the first year or two, it was like, you can't do that, you can't do that, and I was astounded, I actually, I think I was the first one to bring up the term fiduciary. Remember back from those days? Yeah, but, you know, to have a disgusting education...
I can actually discuss it today, absolutely.
Because education doesn't, you know, it's astounding, but it's encouraging, hearing the feedback from all of us, knowing that we have the team in place, especially with our advocacy committee, our chair, and the energy of all of our board members committed to that, if we can find a good issue to rally around that has a profound impact, those being able to get the maximum amount of benefit from the effort that we put in, it might be something...
I think we just found one, yeah. I, I know the reason I even questioned it is because I was just shocked to hear that. I did not know that, coming from being a proud citizen.
I ran out of expression.
Sit tight, Mr. Thor, sit tight.
Primary budgeting is...
You know my shock, no?
The primary budgeting is, is year-to-year liquidated funds, and it's just a silly way to, you know, you don't open and close a business on one day, and...
We couldn't operate our own families that way.
Absolutely.
We could talk about how, how, you know, the budget is put together. I, I do want to say one thing on this, and I, I mentioned some of our esteemed board members and to turn to them, but without a doubt, we want to turn to Mr. Isola, Mr. Sanz, and the whole team, because you've got ideas of things we need, what we should do, so I'm looking to that.
Absolutely.
I put it into such in this statement that, and I will say this, there are many laws when it comes to financial matters, the most important bill of the year that's signed into law is the state budget. And the way that works is that that supersedes anything more. And the way it's worded is for this coming fiscal year, starting July 1, for the next fiscal year, this is what something is. And regardless of what the law and the book is, for that year, it's not there. And frankly, we're going to have to study it year in, year out. So part of it is understanding the budget process and how that works. And part of it, again, and you're absolutely right how crucial this is, is to look at funding in general and to turn to see, I mean, I wonder how school boards has approached it. Obviously, we have a different perspective, all of us, from the people at the state level, quite honestly. Because what they do, maybe I'm being a little too subject, but we know this, it goes on every year. They come up with budget projections. They follow it from month to month, starting with the budget message in February. They adopt the budget ultimately by before July 1. And they look at the latest projections. And if they're short a bit, or a few hundred million, things happen. And that's when you see all this. But, not but, this is where we could play a part in trying to get a message across of the primacy of this and where we stand. So I don't think we should recite this as valuable.
Just a really quick, and you mentioned the budget talk in February. Traditionally, when a new governor comes in, they give him an extended time in order to prepare the budget. So as we mentioned last night at the meeting, this year, you probably won't have the budget from the governor at the end of February. It'll probably be two to three weeks later.
Right. They do that whenever you go.
Perhaps with the new administration or with the, if it can be shown to be something that doesn't necessarily take away from the state, we can get some action on giving us a little more ability to control some of the long-term challenges.
On policies, so we're going to be, you know, just saying that they, and I guess, I know maybe it's going back a little to what we were talking about, the value of the committee meetings. It's invaluable. As a board member, how much, there's so much that I learn and learn. There's so much that's being developed that each of us learn. So that it's both contributing, but also learning about the district until we can do a better job as board members. It's fantastic. And as citizen members, you know, Mr. Thor mentioned being a citizen member before being a board member. And again, this is something we often talk about. So many of us have played with you, myself included, were citizen members before we came on. So it's, and again, Mr. O'Brien, you said, which is really the key, the divergence of opinion. People who know, when I go to committee meetings, they do a lot of talking. But I also love to listen to the different points of view because as you bring it out, more things develop. So really, it's a wonderful system we have.
Good. Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes our committee report.
That concludes, it is now time...
One last item, I apologize, but we had a discussion. Want to bring it back to the board. During the last, and I mentioned earlier in my remarks that the retreat committee, I've asked the members that participated on that day if we could create it as a standing committee and rename it, I believe was Professional Learning Committee. Because one of the things that we find is helpful is as a district, we focus on professional development. We were fortunate that Kathy Wankoff from the New Jersey School Board Association joined us at the retreat. So as a board, we will continue to gain credit for the work. And this board has the pleasure and privilege of having several members who have achieved high levels of certification as master board members and board members, certified board members. And we need to continue to work, both for the purpose of, you know, understanding what it is that we need to do and how we can work effectively to help this district. But also because it gives us a chance to really dive deep and help us improve as board members. So I'm very, very grateful to the committee members for their willingness to step up and have another meeting. And they, of course, will work out their timetable as well. But that, with the pleasure of the board, I'd like to establish that as a standing committee. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, sir. We had thrown that out there, and I know we toggled, I don't know where we landed, if it was Board Learning Committee or Professional Learning Committee. We've toggled those words a little bit. Just a point of clarity, it's for the board's work at this Professional Learning Committee.
Strictly Professional Learning.
I don't want the large percentage of the audience that's sitting here tonight, part of our teachers have to be thinking that...
Oh, I want to clarify it. We're not, we're not talking about anything for the district. We're talking about for us as a board. Again, we're talking about vision statements for the board. We're talking about professional learning for the board. But it's just because we respect and admire the work that's being done in the district. And we want to match that level of commitment here as a board. So take it as a compliment, we're imitating some very successful practice. That being said, I believe that closes the discussion. I mean, closes committee reports.
That closes committee reports. It is now time for the first comment.
Okay. Folks, I know it's...
Whereas the IBD Education Council's comments during the public may last 45 minutes, those comments will be kicked out in accordance with its file on 1/6/2020. May you learn the three and one teach. You also should respect the time and decorum. We'll be in presence of the board, Mr. Kennedy O'Brien. With your permission, sir, lay the floor of the open.
Seeing no comments, we're closed.
You know, it's... Same time, the floor will be closed.
Yes. We had a great discussion. We're running a little later than normal, but I think it's your fault for giving us those cookies and all these things.
I'll share the love.
We appreciate it. So that's going to crash soon, so we better... Moving on to the next piece of business.
It's time for the consent agenda, sir.
Let us, I need to move in a second. Move, I guess, now, a second, Mr. Bonjavani.
Thank you. And we will please note on 3010, remove the name Harris Aaron and insert Crystal Johnson, C-R-I-S-T-A-L Johnson, common spelling. And we are also taking you then to serve with...
We'll be both, right? Is it correct?
A line is printed in your packet this evening. A two from executive session will be approve the withholding of adjustment and experience increments for Daniel Charette for the 2018-2019 school year. A three will be approved the following leave of actions for Susan Bezinghanna, grade three teacher at Ardina School. Medical leave with pay with benefits, December 12th to February 15th, utilizing 36, six, and two and a half personal days. Extend that medical leave with pay less cost and substitute with benefits from February 18th, the other half of the day PM only, to March 23rd with the expectation that that would use 24 and a half days. But the motion will read not to exceed 39 days. And with your permission, I add an A four, establish a standing committee of the Professional Learning Committee.
Right.
Will we move in a second, Mr....
I'm moving a second for the, I believe that was Ms. Valley and Mr. Bonjavani.
Thank you. With your permission, I take that round.
We do.
Mrs. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes.
Mr. German?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangana?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Consent agenda, it changes any agenda as read in or approved by votes in favor, not opposed.
Is it time for the second public comment, sir?
It is time for the second public comment. Remembering everything I said for the first one, then I had opened the floor for the second public comment prior to the comments at this time.
Being done.
Public comment is closed.
I believe I need a motion?
Move it.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Great work tonight. Appreciate it. We got a lot done. Thank you. Get home safe.